We are going to start our meeting in just a second. All right, if we're ready to go. Looks good. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming to our meeting tonight. My name is Amada Marcus Simila, Mayor of Columbia Heights, and tonight is our Monday, April fourteenth, City Council meeting. Could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Spriggs.
Here.
Councilmember Dineen.
Here.
Councilmember James.
Here.
Councilmember Biscens.
Here.
Mayor Marcus Simila.
Here.
And welcome to everyone here in the council chambers and everyone watching this, either streaming or recording. You're always welcome to attend our meetings. We're happy to have you here. First, we're going to start with our pledge of allegiance. So if you're able to, please join me in stand and saying the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. One nation, united in the Constitution of the United States of America.
Thank you. And now, I would like to ask the council if we are okay to approve the agenda as presented.
Yes.
All right. Do we have a motion then to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Dineen and a second by councilmember James to approve the agenda. Any questions? Seeing none then, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Next, we have our proclamations. Tonight, for our first proclamation, we have Autism Acceptance Awareness Month. And I will read our proclamation first, and then we will have our guests come up to receive the proclamation. So first, I'm going to read this. In Columbia Heights, we strive to be a city where everyone belongs, where people of all abilities are recognized, supported, and included. During Autism Acceptance Month, we deepen our commitment to embracing neurodiversity and celebrating the contributions of our neighbors on the autism spectrum. One in thirty-four Minnesotans is diagnosed with autism. As understanding and awareness have grown, so too has a recognition that autism is a spectrum, and support must reflect that. Some individuals may need lifelong twenty-four-seven care, while others require accommodations to thrive in schools, workplaces, and community spaces. Every person with autism deserves access to the resources, dignity, and belonging that allow them to live fully. Autistic individuals enrich our community through their perspectives, talents, and lived experiences. We honor the diverse and intersectional identities within the autism community and the vibrant culture that has emerged from it. True acceptance means moving beyond awareness. It means ensuring our city's policies, services, schools, and businesses reflect our values of inclusion and accessibility. It means recognizing that there's still work to be done, especially when creating systems that are welcoming to all neurotypes. This April, Columbia Heights proudly honors Autism Acceptance Month and World Autism Day on April second. Together, we celebrate the beauty of neurodiversity and reaffirm our responsibility to build a community where everyone feels seen, respected, and valued. Now, therefore, I, Amada Marcus Simila, Mayor of Columbia Heights, do hereby declare the month of April two thousand twenty-five as Autism Awareness Month. And to receive the proclamation is Anya Bohm with her parents, and they're going to join up at the podium.
And then we'll also do a photo of the council. Hi, Anya. Did you see some people in there?
Yeah.
Well, here's that piece of paper I told you about, and you can see there's shiny gold on it. And this is for you to hold the paper with you. Okay, are you sure you're holding it?
Yeah.
Can you see it in there? There it is. There's a camera right there, okay? Where do you hold it? Do you want to hold it? All right, here we go. Two, three. Thank you. And Anya, we have a present here from the city of Columbia Heights. We want a backpack for you, and there's some surprises inside. You want to see what's in there? Put your case in there. She's like, you can take this home with you. Should I know this is your mom? All right. And then your mom's going to tell us something about the book that she brought, okay? Thank you so much. Can we all clap our hands for Anya? Thank you so much for coming in and all of our family and friends as well to help support our awareness for autism. Nikki, Nikki.
Hello, my name is Nikki Bohm. I'm a special education teacher and behavioral specialist. My daughter is the awesome Anya. Anya's had a rough go of things when she was younger. She had, she's a two-time cancer survivor. When she was four, we went in for neurological testing to be completed to see if Anya had developmental effects from chemotherapy. At this time, we were told Anya had autism. Just like other people in the family, it may be genetic, and that is how she got it. In Anya's case, this is the case. The cancer had nothing to do with autism. Autism and autism spectrum disorder refers to a broad range of conditions, such as challenges, social group, repetitive behaviors, speech, and nonverbal communication. Anya happens to be on the higher end of the spectrum. She has a hard time making and keeping friends. And with this book that we are showing, that we tell Anya that she has an autism boost and that she's a superhero, and she has learned a lot from this book. I just wanted to say thank you to listening to our story and thank you for this, Columbia Heights, for giving Anya this high honor and Happy Autism Awareness Month.
Thank you, Nikki. Our next proclamation is for Earth Day, and reading this proclamation is Rachel James. Councilmember James.
Thank you. Proclamation recognizing April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five as Earth Day. Earth Day was first celebrated on April twenty-second, nineteen seventy, with the goal of inspiring appreciation of our nation's natural resources through conservation and environmental protection. From the conception of Earth Day, activists across Minnesota have engaged in this national movement and established a tradition of environmental consciousness. On the very first Earth Day in nineteen seventy, approximately three hundred and fifty University of Minnesota students protested unsustainable energy practices. Indigenous movements in Minnesota have organized to preserve the health and stability of the environment. The global community is facing extraordinary environmental challenges, such as climate extremes, public health issues, economic strains, and food and water shortages. These challenges will continue to have more severe, negative, and lasting impacts on every member of our global community and have been found to disproportionately affect people with low income, people of color, indigenous communities, and immigrants. The people of Columbia Heights must continue to step forward and take action to create positive environmental changes to combat these extraordinary challenges. People and organizations across Columbia Heights celebrate Earth Month with activities throughout April in recognition of our commitment to environmental stewardship while remembering that one day is not enough.
Thank you. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Amada Marcus Simila, Mayor of Columbia Heights, do hereby proclaim and recognize April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five as Earth Day in the city of Columbia Heights, County of Anoka, State of Minnesota, USA. And here to receive our proclamation on behalf of the community is our Sustainability Commission members, Bree LaPlante and Cassandra Leoni Halbaka. If you could come up to the podium.
And Becky Jeffries.
Oh, sorry.
Before I begin, I just want to quickly introduce myself. I'm Dr. Madeline Johnson Christian. Thank you to our mayor and the council for presenting this Earth Day proclamation during today's meeting. As the Chair of the City Sustainability Commission, it is an honor to lead our group of nine individuals from the community who are dedicated to making Columbia Heights a healthy and safe place to live. For the Sustainability Commission, the mission and vision of Earth Day expands beyond the confines of a single day. Each month, we gather to advance policies and initiatives to improve the quality of our natural environment, citywide spaces, transportation, and much more, building towards an interconnected community and climate resilience. We appreciate the council's support of this work and are grateful for this proclamation to remind us all of the importance of such work. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is for Arbor Day, and councilmember Dineen is going to read this for us.
Sure, thank you. Arbor Day, Arbor Month. Trees and forest soils play a vital role in protecting our environment. They help clean our lakes and streams by naturally filtering out pollutants and sediments. Forest soils act as sponges, absorbing and storing rainwater and snowmelt, reducing stormwater runoff, and preventing flooding. This water is then slowly released into our lakes, streams, and groundwater, keeping our ecosystem balanced. Thoughtful management of our forests is one of the most effective ways to protect our drinking water and reduce the cost of water treatment. Forested public lands surrounding the Mississippi River provide over one million Minnesotans with clean drinking water. In fact, about three-quarters of all Minnesotans rely on drinking water that originates in our state's forested regions. Planting and caring for trees is one of the most straightforward and powerful actions to protect our water and environment. Trees connect us to clean water, air, shade, beauty, and climate resilience. Each year, on the last Friday of April and throughout May, Minnesotans unite to recognize and celebrate trees' essential role in our lives. It is a time to recommit to nurturing the vitality of our forests and planting seeds for a healthier future. In Columbia Heights, we celebrate Arbor Day on Friday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, with a special tree planting event. Our city forester will be on hand to share knowledge and answer questions. Children are invited to participate in the planning and learn about the importance of trees in our community.
Now, therefore, I, Amada Marcus Simila, Mayor of Columbia Heights, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, as Arbor Day and the month of May, two thousand twenty-five, as Arbor Month in the city of Columbia Heights. Let us celebrate by planting, protecting, and appreciating the trees that sustain us all. And which members of our Sustainability Commission would like to receive this?
All three.
All three again. All right, come on up. Let's do another photo, everyone.
Okay. Becky, our person. This.
Yep, if we stand really close to them, it's all clear. Everybody?
Kathy and I will say a few things.
Okay. Hello. So thank you to our mayor and the council for presenting this Arbor Day proclamation today. As members of City Sustainability Commission, Bree and I are proud to work on policies and projects that address many aspects of environmental health and community building. One that is near and dear to us is building and maintaining a robust canopy of trees in Columbia Heights. We have had the joy of partnering with the city's urban forester expert, Liam Genter, to understand the advancements he has made during his tenure to diversify and expand the tree population in our city.
When you're walking around your neighborhood, please take time to admire and appreciate the boulevard trees and park trees that Liam has planted and nurtured for us, which are not only beautiful and proven to boost public health, but are also a critical tool in community climate resilience. We are extremely grateful for the city's investment in our urban forest and appreciate this Arbor Day proclamation to recognize the progress we have made and the future work we can do together.
Thank you. What a great show of community action from our Sustainability Commission. I think this is the most we've ever had of a commission member coming to our council meeting, but thank you for all coming here, all four of you. Our next proclamation is for National Volunteer Month, and councilmember Biscens will read this one.
Hello, everyone. Proclamation for National Volunteer Month, April two thousand twenty-five. In Columbia Heights, volunteers make a real difference every day. When people offer their time, talents, and energy to help others, they strengthen the heart of our community. From tackling climate change to providing food and shelter for neighbors in need, volunteers across Minnesota have stepped up in powerful ways. They've helped reduce inequality, supported those impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and shown us all what it means to care for one another. In our state, forty-point-three percent of people formally volunteer through organizations, while sixty-three-point-four percent give their time informally by helping friends, families, and neighbors. This spirit of generosity has earned Minnesota the third-highest volunteerism rate in the country. Between September two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, more than one-point-eight million Minnesotans gave over one hundred and ten million hours of service. Here in Columbia Heights, that spirit is alive and thriving. Volunteer groups like the Lions Rotary, Kiwanis, Heights Next, our neighborhood associations, and faith communities regularly lead service projects, organize events, and offer helping hands. Many individuals give their time at SECA, Southern Anoka Community Assistance, in our schools, our public library, and within their places of worship. Their work uplifts neighbors, creates meaningful connections, and improves lives in visible and lasting ways. Volunteers are at the core of what makes communities like Columbia Heights thrive. They build stronger, more connected neighborhoods and inspire lasting change where they live, work, and play. During Volunteer Month, we celebrate how people use their time and voices to uplift causes they care about. We also recognize the essential role of volunteers in creating a more equitable and resilient community.
Thank you. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Amada Marcus Simila, Mayor of Columbia Heights, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, as Arbor Day and the month of May, two thousand twenty-five, as Arbor Month in the city of Columbia Heights. Let us celebrate by planting, protecting, and appreciating the trees that sustain us all. And which members of our Sustainability Commission would like to receive this?
All three.
All three again. All right, come on up. Let's do another photo, everyone.
Okay. Becky's our person. This.
Yep, if we stand really close to them, it's all clear. Everybody?
Great. Kathy and I will say a few things.
Okay, great.
Okay. Hello. So thank you to our mayor and the council for presenting this Arbor Day proclamation today. As members of City Sustainability Commission, Bree and I are proud to work on policies and projects that address many aspects of environmental health and community building. One that is near and dear to us is building and maintaining a robust canopy of trees in Columbia Heights. We have had the joy of partnering with the city's urban forester expert, Liam Genter, to understand the advancements he has made during his tenure to diversify and expand the tree population in our city.
When you're walking around your neighborhood, please take time to admire and appreciate the boulevard trees and park trees that Liam has planted and nurtured for us, which are not only beautiful and proven to boost public health, but are also a critical tool in community climate resilience. We are extremely grateful for the city's investment in our urban forest and appreciate this Arbor Day proclamation to recognize the progress we have made and the future work we can do together.
Thank you. What a great show of community action from our Sustainability Commission. I think this is the most we've ever had of a commission member coming to our council meeting, but thank you for all coming here, all four of you. Our next proclamation is for National Volunteer Month, and councilmember Biscens will read this one.
Hello, everyone. Proclamation for National Volunteer Month, April two thousand twenty-five. In Columbia Heights, volunteers make a real difference every day. When people offer their time, talents, and energy to help others, they strengthen the heart of our community. From tackling climate change to providing food and shelter for neighbors in need, volunteers across Minnesota have stepped up in powerful ways. They've helped reduce inequality, supported those impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and shown us all what it means to care for one another. In our state, forty-point-three percent of people formally volunteer through organizations, while sixty-three-point-four percent give their time informally by helping friends, families, and neighbors. This spirit of generosity has earned Minnesota the third-highest volunteerism rate in the country. Between September two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, more than one-point-eight million Minnesotans gave over one hundred and ten million hours of service. Here in Columbia Heights, that spirit is alive and thriving. Volunteer groups like the Lions Rotary, Kiwanis, Heights Next, our neighborhood associations, and faith communities regularly lead service projects, organize events, and offer helping hands. Many individuals give their time at SECA, Southern Anoka Community Assistance, in our schools, our public library, and within their places of worship. Their work uplifts neighbors, creates meaningful connections, and improves lives in visible and lasting ways. Volunteers are at the core of what makes communities like Columbia Heights thrive. They build stronger, more connected neighborhoods and inspire lasting change where they live, work, and play. During Volunteer Month, we celebrate how people use their time and voices to uplift causes they care about. We also recognize the essential role of volunteers in creating a more equitable and resilient community.
Thank you. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Amada Marcus Simila, Mayor of Columbia Heights, proclaim April two thousand twenty-five as National Volunteer Month in the city of Columbia Heights. I encourage individuals, families, and groups to find opportunities to get involved and make a difference through service. Our community is stronger because of you. And receiving our, oh, yes, we can come on, sorry. And receiving this proclamation tonight is Becky Grosseth. If you want to come on up.
Unless there's a little short person.
Where are you going? There you go.
So what both of you spoke about the proclamation kind of summarized it pretty well, but as a resident of Columbia Heights for more than twenty-five years, I felt like I existed in Columbia Heights for the first fifteen, but I've lived in Columbia Heights for the last ten. And that's due to becoming involved in things, whether it's being on one of the commissions, something that the city has, an organized thing, or one of the community groups such as Heights Next, or even just picking up trash every day on my dog walks. It's making me feel more like this is my home and more proud to be part of this, that I want to make it a better place. And so I encourage anyone who isn't already involved in something to find what your passion is, what your interest is, and there's something out there for you that you can contribute to making Columbia Heights a better place.
Thank you so much. And on the behalf of mentioning Volunteer Month, we just had another volunteer in Columbia Heights who was highlighted in the Northeastern newspaper, Neil Granland, for just being a part of the community and volunteering. So we're thankful that the Northeastern was out there highlighting volunteers this month as well, so a little plug for that. But thank you so much for coming in, and we appreciate your work so much. Next, we have our community forum. The community forum is an opportunity to address the city council about items not scheduled for a public hearing. And I'll ask our city clerk if there's anyone here who would like to speak tonight.
There are.
All right.
Mark Veronicus would like to address the council.
Thank you. Come on up. Good afternoon.
Yeah, when you work six p.m. to six a.m., this is six a.m., regardless of what you mentally think or what it looks like out there. Your whole world's backwards. I have page one today. I'm proud of myself. It's been a while since I've been before you. Three months and change, I believe, right? Anyway, hi there. First off, I'm Mark Veronicus. I live at ten fifty-five Peters Place, but we already own all that, so I wish I could say, I wish I could say that it's nice to be back here with you, Madam Mayor, council members, but honestly, I'd much rather be at work right now. I just woke up. Why really, what really, where was I? I'd much rather be at work. So, there we are, all done with the formalities. Now on to the reason why we're back yet again, parking on Peters Place in Gould. The no parking on the north side of the street has been a great success as for, as far as the trash pickups concerned. That being said, the people on that side of the street still have no parking when they have friends or family come over. It's not because there's not enough parking on the one side of the street, it's because the ratio takes all the spaces, even though there's more than enough parking for every unit in the apartment building right there in the building itself. From the beginning of the planning stages, parking was a priority because of all the apartments and what the effects were going to be on the surrounding neighborhood. If that wasn't addressed right from the beginning, as a resident of the surrounding neighbor, neighborhood, have firsthand and countless years, I've been firsthand, had countless years been dealing with the effects, and let's face it, it sucks. So here we are, back yet again, at another city council meeting to find out how our three-month window pertaining to the updated plan you came up with is working out. I have to say that if you have already evaluated it, I'd be rather surprised. That being said, this is my evaluation. Rarely ever has the city issued tickets or tow vehicles off the street. If they did, it was only because of the people living in the neighborhood that you come out from, wait, only because of the people in the neighborhood. It's crazy to me to look at the last snowstorm as an example. Even then, there was still no parking allowed on the city streets from two a.m. to six a.m. Not one car was told until about eleven a.m. after the snowstorm, and that's after multiple neighbors called and complained to the city, including me, who called Aaron, asking him if he could please do something, because I was sick of all my neighbors calling me to complain, because, because I was in the middle of my working week. I worked twelve hours nights, so when they called ten, nine, eight in the morning and they're complaining about parking, it really messes my sleeping schedule up. So I was rather crabby that night at work, and, where was I? Our roads were terrible because of all the cars on them when the plows came through, and what the plow guys have to deal with when they try to plow our streets is a joke. The cars should be long gone before they come through, and as far as how the cars parked in front of the ratio, do you really think they're all there parked to go to the businesses? So after living with this nightmare for almost three years now, can you please give us back the plan we spent two years putting together before you took it away and came up with this amazing new plan? Please give us our permit parking and let us self-police the parking. If someone is parked in front of someone's driveway or parked in the no parking zones or doesn't have a permit on their car, give us the power to call a truck, tow truck, and have it removed. Please, please, give us our sanity back. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathy Gomez would like to address the council. Thank you. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Kathy Gomez, live down the street, Heights resident. I was just wondering, works sound a little tired still, but, you know, I understand the three-hour parking and that, but if you look out at my window at eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock, there ain't no businesses open. Why are there cars up and down the street still at twelve o'clock in the morning? I mean, it was okay, we tried it for three months to see if this would work, and it's not. I mean, you can't get up and down no further this way, I mean, up that way, and then you look up that way, and it's like all the cars from, I'm assuming, ratio or whatever on that side of the street where there's. that side of the street where they're supposed to be, but it's still at midnight, 1:00, where it's, you know, saying, no parking after, for three hours. I can't even park in front of my, my house, because it's like, no parking emergency vehicles here, and then the three-hour parking, so which, which way do I park? So I park in the grass. I'm waiting for the police to come and get me for that, but if I can't park in front of my house, because I don't have a drive, I have a garage in the back, but not in front. When I have my husband that can barely walk, darn right, I'm going to park in the grass, because he can't walk into the house and go upstairs and stuff. I am going to go down and try to get a parking permit from the city to get, or DMV, to get a, you know, whatever they call them, you know, hand, thank you, because he can't walk. So, I mean, it was a good idea for, to go for three months, we tried it. I'm just wondering why that 12:00 in the morning, there's cars, and there is no business, no Dairy Queen, no bank is open, no movie theater, and they're all still parked there. And I could tell some of the cars, it's like, yep, that's ratio, because you just watch them go, and they go to ratio. I mean, I'm just wondering what's happening now.
All right, thank you.
Paul Edner would like to address the council.
All right. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members, and distinguished guests. Same, same issue, parking on Gould and Peters Place. I have seen noted improvement over the last three months. If the council has indeed completed a three-month evaluation of the current situation, and if that has not already been posted on the city webpage, it would be nice to get that information updated, because, well, we only come periodically for these council meetings. Just a few days ago, I had to call the police at 12:30 a.m. to have a car removed from in front of my driveway. Within a day, the distinguished neighbor, Mark, was over, and there was a car parked on the opposite side of the street, so the north side of Gould Avenue, and he called the police, and they were going to just issue a citation, but Mark reminded them that talk to your superiors, we are having cars towed, and they did. So it is making a difference, however, we'd like to see something change. As was mentioned with the three-hour rule, there is constantly cars parked in the three-hour business parking at all hours of the day and night. The two-hour parking rule, I know, has a limited schedule between, I want to say, April or May, and then November. I've seen them out all winter at 2:00 to 6:00 a.m. So, an update on the parking situation, what results you've gotten back from police and any other, the MINDOT. Going on to the second topic, the Central Avenue corridor, hopefully, you've gotten more feedback from the community, because it's going to drastically impact getting in and out of Minneapolis, and since we're right on the edge, it's going to affect us profoundly. So buses are currently stopping in the traffic lane, not even in the shoulder, to get people on and off. Well, if we only have one lane, there isn't going to be any movement until a bus goes. So I'd appreciate any updated information, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Paul.
Yes.
I will say that we can follow up with a study, we have not done a study yet on the, on the third, sorry, a three-month study on Gould, but I would be interested to get some data. I know it's something that we've been working on, I'm glad to hear that you have seen some, a change, but yeah. We have not done a, or at least as council, I don't think we've seen a formal study right now, but we will make that happen and, and get some data collected for that. Yep, well, yeah, we will, we will get that, and then we will figure out what we'll, we'll definitely talk about it, I think, at the next work session, so.
Madam Mayor, if I could, I think that's a great idea. This is very helpful for you guys to come in and share your anecdotes and stories, you know, during that three-month period. We can compile data from the police department and all other staff that have kind of interacted with the quarter, because we have, you know, had conversations with the business community and other residents, compile that, bring it back to a work session for discussion, and then see if the council would like to consider any additional action from there.
Yep, and also the concerns that you brought up, we'll make sure that the chief hears about them and brings that into our data, too. So, yes, if you'd like, if you want more thing, if you can come to the microphone?
Yep.
Sure.
On that study, as we had requested, and it sounded like it was going to be done like January to March, or February to April, could we get a timeframe on that? Could we know that if it's going to be one more month, or three more months, or six more months?
I'll look at our city.
Yeah, let's put it on the May work session, to have the report compiled from the time that the program was instituted, you know, through now.
Right.
So no additional.
When would the work session be, or the results from the work session?
May 5th, I believe, is the next work session. Thank you, I'm getting the nod from city clerk, so, yeah, May 5th.
Okay, and would that be where we get the information, or just where you get it collected?
That would be where we would discuss the report from staff with the city council, and it is open to the public.
Excellent. Thank you.
So that will be, I'll just kind of also reframe that staff will bring forth the report, and that's when council will see it, so that's when we'll have a chance to discuss and ask questions based on that report.
Excellent, and again, whether it's published on the city website, mailed out to the residents or something, if we could get the update at earliest convenience.
Sure, and then also your extra, or your second question was about MINDOT. We also have a MINDOT presentation at that same work session, so it'd be great for you to come, and you can see kind of where things are at, at that as well.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see you then, in a few weeks. Thank you. Oh, if you'd like to, I'll have you, Mark, come up to the microphone. Otherwise, we can't hear it on the recording, we won't know.
I haven't even had caffeine yet today, this is terrible. I knew I should have downed a coke before I came in. But one of our, my other neighbors, Alyssa, you know her, a nice lady, she told me to read this to you guys, she said, hey, Mark, this is her email, her texting me, hey, Mark, thanks for reaching out, based on what I've seen on our road, it looks like one side is no parking, and the other is sands temporary from November to March, no overnight parking. Biggest issue I see is the ratio tenants parking more than three hours in the business spots, and that area gets busy. Unfortunately, unfortunately, the current setup didn't work so far, no major issues I'm aware of then, but I believe the city should consider parking permits for our streets. And she said, she's sorry, couldn't make it. But that being said, if you guys couldn't enforce the ordinances in the wintertime, when it's easy, like the blizzard over here, and how are you going to enforce it in the summer? I mean, if it, if, if, literally, you know, we have a foot of heavy, wet snow, and the cars are obviously parked out there from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., when there's no parking on city streets in Columbia Heights, if you guys can't enforce it on a day like that, how are you going to do it when it's 80 and sunny in Columbia Heights? I don't see logic. I mean, the road out here, it was horrible. If you went on Peters Place, literally, we had a plow just wide enough for a path, wide enough for a plow to get through, because there were parked cars on both sides. There, there were people that, they, they tried going up the street, they couldn't even get up the street, because there was so much snow and, and ice. And when I was talking about it, I was like, what's the point in coming back out and plowing it now? It's going to be 70 degrees in a couple days, it's just going to melt on its own, just wasting more taxpayer dollars to fix a problem that shouldn't have been there to start with. So.
All right, well, thank.
If you can't do it now, how are you going to do it then? And hopefully, your study will figure that out.
We will, yep, we will try our best to figure it out, and, and happy to have you at the work session in May, so you can hear that report.
What day is that on?
May 5th.
Is that a Monday, Tuesday?
Monday.
Oh.
Right, Sarah? It's not a holiday-affected, okay.
It's Monday the 5th, and it'll start at 6:00 p.m.
And the, everything will be posted.
May 5th.
The Friday before, so you'll have all the information the Friday before as well.
I'm curious about the Rainbow site, since we're here, you know, we, we had Grand Central lots up there that, when they went in, they had the problem with the parking, when they put the other housing in, the low-income buy it, and we've had the problem with the parking at the racial here. And, you know, so we, in theory, should have learned from the first one, and obviously, we didn't, because we're, me and my neighbors, we're still here today. Is the racial going to be the same way as this? Are they, are they going to be allowed to park on the street down there? Or is, I know it's all in the planning stages, and it's all, you know, the hush, hush, whatever, can't tell us anything kind of thing, but, but I'm wondering, have you learned from this experience and the other experience, is that going to be better than this, or is it going to be even more chaos than this?
I would just say we're, it's still in the planning stages, I would say there's nothing that we can't say, as much as there's not much to say. I believe our website has our basic information on that space, but, yeah, I don't know if you want to add anything.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, no significant updates, but definitely learning from past projects and incorporating that into future projects is, is something that we will do. It's different in the sense that it's not inside the Central Business District, which relies on integrating the municipal parking ramp, so there, a significant difference in how we will approach calculating parking spaces on that site versus this project, especially as it relates to, you know, guest parking and other business overflow parking. So it's a different analysis altogether, but there'll be a lot of hearings, there'll be a lot of opportunities to participate. We don't have a timeline for exactly when that'll take place, but stay tuned, there'll be a lot of good advertisement and a lot of chances to engage with the Planning Commission, who really starts the, the nuts and bolts analysis of parking data. Right now, they're.
They've been planted for over two years, I mean, how.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So, we haven't had any plans submitted to actually go through the formal process with the city, so we're still waiting on that.
Yeah, I thought they learned it from here, because this place, you know, you know, I'm sure you've all been in the garages, I mean, it's two floors of garages, I mean, there's parking for every unit, plus, there's, there's ample parking to give us our neighborhood back, but obviously, that's not a thing with this development. So I was just wondering if it's going to, they're going to be in the same boat, plenty of parking, yet nobody's going to be able to afford to park, and we're going to have the same problem in that neighborhood.
Well, I can say, we are, we are definitely learning, we're learning from things, so, yes.
Yeah, like I said, I'd rather be anywhere than here right now, so.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you for coming in, though. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening?
No one else has requested, and there is no one online.
All right, thank you. It looks like everyone who's been here is going to say something, so thank you for coming in and sharing that, and we will get that on our work session at our next meeting. All right, that takes us to our consent agenda. These items are considered to be routine by the city council, and will be enacted as part of the consent agenda by one motion. Does anyone in the council have any items they'd like moved, or have questions on? All right, seeing none, then I'll ask our city manager to take us through the items.
Madam Mayor, council, item one is approval of the March 24th, 2025 City Council Meeting Minutes. Item two is approval of the April 7th, 2025 City Council Work Session Meeting Minutes. Item three is acceptance of the October 17th, 2024 Charter Commission Meeting Minutes. Item four is acceptance of the February 4th, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. Item five is acceptance of the February 5th, 2025 Library Board Meeting Minutes. Item six is acceptance of the March 3rd, 2025 Regular EDA Meeting Minutes. Item seven is approval of change order number one for the City Hall Library Parking Lot Paving Project. So contractor got into the project, did a little bit deeper survey work to start it this spring, and uncovered an issue with the design of our retaining wall. We have to change the scope and methodology. It's detailed in the report, Kevin, I'm going to try to do it justice, but rather than tying the fabric, or excuse me, tying the retaining wall with fabric to hold it in place, we don't have the space for that, so switching to a concrete-filled or back-filled construction methodology has increased cost on that project. Total change order amount is $27,315. Item eight is a change order, number one, for the corn main water meter replacement program, City Project 2409. So this is to bring in essentially all of the commercial water main, excuse me, water meters into the scope. It was previously focused on just residential, this is really anything one inch and above. The last time that these meters were replaced was 2014, so they're past their 20-year useful lifespan, and it would bring then all of the city's meters into alignment with the same radio transceiver that is on all of the new meters going into, to residents' properties throughout the city. Item nine is authorization for capital equipment replacement for the generator at the Public Safety Building. So, generator's past its useful lifespan and was oversized, and has not been, it's leaking fluids, and, and not in a state where investing in reworking the generators recommended by the city's central garage. So replacement of the generator, right sizing it to the appropriate, it's about double the size that it needs to be currently, so that estimate is off government contract pricing, $87,500. It's expected that the city's, or excuse me, that the, the police's 2025 budget is going to be able to absorb this, and not have to require a budget amendment. Item 10, authorization for capital equipment purchase, six-yard HD satellite-mounted hopper unit. This is for improving trash handling operations in the city's parks. So we have a smaller unit, this two-yard unit, this would upgrade to a six-yard and allow compaction, and allow less trips back and forth from parks back to public works. And then the current unit would be switched over to recycling operations for the parks. Item 11 is consideration of rental license exemption for three properties. These properties were part of a larger approval, if the council recalls, from brick by brick. They gave quite an extensive report to the city council regarding their acquisition of 10 homes within the city, actually 345 across the metro, where the, the company that they bought them from was facing legal action from the state, so they stepped in, they've kind of had that unique program where they're trying to promote essentially the lease-stone model. It's that group, they have three that are affected by the city's density cap, that they're just asking for additional time to complete the, the necessary repairs. Item 11 is license agendas for routine business licenses. Item 13 are the routine rental occupancy licenses for approval. And finally, item 14, review of the city's bills for this period, which total $1,927,814.79. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember James.
First, regarding number, item number 10, I'm really thankful for this opportunity. I know members of our public works have been working really hard to keep our parks clean, and this is a significant upgrade for our public work staff, and where is that fund coming from? Is it just coming, that has a number here, but is that the general capital equipments fund? I'm not sure where that's from.
I'd let Public Works Director answer that question, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So the 431 is our capital equipment replacement general fund, and then the 3121 is the Streets Department, so it's coming out of Streets Capital Equipment.
Thank you, I'm really grateful that's been, and I'm also just a comment on item number seven, the parking lot paving behind the library. I'm glad we're working to make that just a long-lasting project, because I think that that parking lot's going to play an important part, as we're working on redoing how the Central Business District and our library has events, and I'm grateful that a number eight, the water meter replacement program, is tying in our commercial properties, because I think that's the next step, so, all good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? No? Thank you for your comments. Councilmember James. All right, then, if there's no other comments or questions, then we have a motion to approve the, motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Spriggs, and a second by Councilmember Bisgins, to accept. I have a motion by Councilmember Spriggs and a second by Councilmember Biskins to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you. Next, we, we have no public hearings this evening. And our items, the next then is items for consideration. So our, under item number 15, we have our first reading of ordinance number 1712, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 3 Administrative Code, Article 5 Administration Administrative Offices. And this will be, presenting this will be our city planner, Andrew Boucher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, before you, we have ordinance number 1712, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 3 Administrative Code, Article 5 Administrative Offenses. Over the past year, we've taken a series of actions related to the development of a administrative citation ordinance. Minnesota Statute 462.362 allows municipalities by ordinance to provide for the enforcement of ordinances through an administrative citation process. Basically, this came as a result of the fire chief and the city attorney reviewing some of the potential consequences specifically related to late fees and the inclusion of language essentially that basically said that if a late fee, if a payment is missed essentially or fine, that would lead to the automatic revocation of all city licenses based on how it's written. And that comes into conflict with the next one, which basically states that they may be subject to revocation. So really all the amendment is, is just tweaking language in subsection D to just be consistent with the very next point and just making sure that we aren't putting people in a situation where licenses are automatically revoked, but that they may be subject to revocation. And with that, I will take any questions you guys have.
Thank you for, for bringing this to us. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Danine?
I just want to say that I'm super excited that our code is getting updated and that we're getting down into the nitty gritty details that are so important. And I thank you guys for really doing your due diligence and, and pawing through all the stuff, which I know is a lot, so thank you very much for all your work on that.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much. We're glad to move forward with this and I'm glad we have our city attorney on board to double check, triple check that we're providing the best service we can for our community. All right, well, if there's no other comments or questions, then we have a motion to waive the reading.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of ordinance 1712, there being ample copies available to the public.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Danine and a second by Councilmember James to waive the reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. And next we have a motion then to set the second reading.
Motion to set the second reading of ordinance 1712, being an ordinance to amend Chapter 3 Administrative Code, Article 5 Administrative Offenses in the City of Columbia Heights for April 28th, 2025 at approximately 6:00 PM.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Danine and a second by Councilmember James to set the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have item number 16, consideration of a rental license exemption for 572 38th Avenue Northeast. And our Community Development Director Mitch Fornay will take us through this item.
Madam Member, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, thank you very much. Just to start out this discussion this evening, I do have one amendment to the item in front of you, which is the section, the second motion under the recommended motions. It currently reads as move to deny, but it should read as move to approve. This is just a clerical error that even if the council decides to deny the, the resolution, then you vote down the approval or you vote for the approval, just to make some clarification. It is also, should be known that staff do not have a recommendation this evening for any of the rental exemptions in front of you. So we had put a piece of language in all of the staff letters talking about future processes and everything like that, but that does not have standing with this evening. Staff do not have a recommendation for any of these rental exemptions and are just here to kind of bring the facts forward and go from there. But that informational item will help the council as you guys make the decisions moving forward with how this policy will be implemented in the future. With that, our, the first rental exemption in front of you this evening is for 572 38th Avenue. It is the same owner as the previous rental exemption that was approved at the last council meeting at 3800 Third Street. The previous rental exemption, they had received notice from the fire department that they had an illegal rental going on. Then they came to the community development staff to get an exemption for that. They had a family member living in that property and required time to give that family member either sell the property or give that family member time to, you know, move on or items like that, which the council had approved. This is the second of their three properties that they own within the City of Columbia Heights, which is 572 38th. This property is a property that they purchased and are looking to start renting the property. There's not currently a tenant in this property and they are currently doing renovations, getting this property ready to make it a rental. And then the other property, the third property that they own within the City of Columbia Heights is a property that they currently reside in at this point, this moment in time. The property 572 38th is located within a block of Block 139, which includes 20 single family homes. It currently has two licensed single family rentals, which meets the block's rental allotment. With that, staff are open to answer any questions. I do have Andrew, our city planner, has been in contact with them, so he can answer some more of their questions. It doesn't look like they're able to join us this evening to be in, in person or online.
All right, thank you. But we did receive an email. Is that, is this correct? Okay.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, yep, there's an email in the.
Yep, so I just, yeah, let, let people know that we did receive an email that was printed out and placed at all of our seats here so we could have more information since they were not able to attend this evening. All right, do we have any discussion from the council on this item?
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Danine?
I will say I'm a little less inclined to approve this one than I was the other one. There's no one currently living there. It specifically bought as an investment property to be rented out. And the due diligence wasn't done to make sure that that was okay in that area. The, the purpose of our rental cap is to make sure that we don't have a lot of people going around and buying up all the single family homes and renting them out so that we can make sure that we still have a market for first time home buyers. I know that this is unfortunate that, you know, someone maybe didn't know the rules. But we have allowed, you know, them to continue renting out one house, so I, I wish that the email may have, you know, had a little bit more information behind it to kind of, you know, persuade me either way, but with the, what we've been talking about with this program and how we want to go forward with it and our justifications, I don't feel that it meets the requirements that we would move forward with.
Thank you. I agree. Anything else? Councilmember James?
Just gonna say, I thank you, Councilmember Danine, for that synopsis and I agree with that.
All right, well, if there's nothing else from the council, then we have a motion then to waive the reading.
Move to waive the reading of Resolution 2025-038, there being ample copies available to the public.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Biskins and a second by Councilmember Spriggs to waive the reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion to waive the reading passes. Next, then we're gonna have a motion to approve the resolution.
Move to approve Resolution 2025-038, a resolution approving the single family rental exemption request for the rental application at 572 38th Avenue Northeast, Columbia Heights, Min. 55421.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Biskins and a second by Councilmember Spriggs to approve the resolution. All in favor say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And the motion does not pass. Thank you. Now we are at item number 17. Consideration of a rental license exemption for 4942 7th Street Northeast. And our Community Development Director Mitch Fornay will take us through this as well.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, with this one, the second motion is correct. Staff got it right on one of the two.
No problem, no problem. We are flexible.
With that, Madam Mayor, as I had stated in the previous conversation, but just to have it on the record, staff are not making a recommendation for this one. The item in the second paragraph or the discussion in the second paragraph is solely as an informational item for the council on kind of the discussion we had at the work session for the continued discussion on the policy. So staff do not have a recommendation and are just going to be stating, stating the facts on this one. On April 9th, 2025, the owner of 4942 7th Street reached out and to request an exemption for their single family property. The block, the property is on Block 64, which has two single family rentals out of the total 23 single family rental units with an allotment of two overall, so they are just right at the cap. With their children grown and they're looking to start a fam, or they're already started a family and the children starting the families of their own, they're looking to retire and downsize, so they purchased another property, are looking to move out of the City of Columbia Heights. They've identified the need for financial stability, especially given previous battle with cancer, unfortunately. And looking to rent this property out while they move to the other property. The only two properties that they own are the two that they have referenced and that staff could find. With that, staff are available for any questions on the situation.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Danine?
Yes, I was wondering, in their letter, it sounds like they want this as a long-term rental, which is not something that is even up for discussion at the moment. You could do the one year, you can renew it for another year as it stands right now. Are they aware of that policy because, or are they just looking to rent it out for the one, two-year period as they move and get settled? That, that I wasn't clear on.
I don't know that they really gave any indication one way or the other. I think they were intending to use this as a passive source of income as their, you know, year retirement.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember James?
Would properties that had, let's, I guess this, this may not be the right time to discuss this, but if, if the council were to change the policy of how long a rental exemption, I wonder if people could come back and apply for longer or if it's, this is, or if, if once it's approved, then that's it for however long it is.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong here, but if we changed the ordinance, they would, they would be able, they would get the new length of the ordinance, so as we're considering these changing into a five-year term, they would then fall under the five-year term from their origination date.
That's correct.
Thanks, Scott.
Appreciate that. Thank you, because I agree that's not a lifelong opportunity, but I know in other situations that I've talked to homeowners, you gotta time the market to sell it at the right time. And so I think that for, for me, this fits financial hardship as in ending a career and moving into a different tax bracket often. To me, that would make me interested. I also am interested in figuring out how we can frame the ordinance for those people who are currently living in their home and then it's, it's not bought as an investment property, but it was bought as a home that they were to live in. So I'm for this resolution and I agree with Councilmember Danine that the timeframe might not be helpful for their goals, but yeah.
I agree, and I think giving them that one year while we're, we may be in flux, but at least they would have a year to know that they can, what they can make a decision with, and it seems like they've had a lot of hard times going on in their personal life too, so I think that, so I would be in favor of allowing this. All right, if there's no other comments from the council then, all right, thank you. I have a motion then to waive the reading.
Move to waive the reading of Resolution 2025-037, there being ample copies available to the public.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember James and a second by Councilmember Danine to waive the reading. Any discussion? Hearing is none, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. And next we have a motion to approve the resolution.
Move to approve Resolution 2025-037, a resolution approving the single family rental exemption request for the rental application at 4942 7th Street Northeast, Columbia Heights, Minnesota 55421.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember James and a second by Councilmember Danine to approve the resolution. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
And the motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have item number 18, consideration of Resolution 2025-35, approving Planning and Inspections Budget Amendment. And taking us through this, again, will be our Community Development Director Mitch Fornay.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, in front of you today is the Resolution 2025-35, which would officially establish or would amend our Planning Inspections Fund 201 to allow us to hire a code enforcement officer or code enforcement inspector. At a previous work session, staff brought forward the idea of hiring the inspector, as stated in the letter, to be more proactive with our code enforcement and also be more equitable, making sure that we're not just picking on certain people with our code enforcement. Kind of spread that out around the, the city and make sure that everybody is following the same rules. As part of this, since the position was not budgeted for in 2025, this budget amendment allows for that person's salary and then also some of the other items on, on, required to have their position. Of keynote is their salary and benefits this pays for the rest of the year for this position. When we come back in 2026, we'll have a better idea of what kind of fees are generated from the position that would offset a little bit of the budget ask. And then computer, iPhone, kind of getting the equipment that they need and then the vehicle maintenance costs. There are vehicles available at the Public Works Department that they're actually gearing up for an auction, so there is a vehicle that the inspector will be able to take over and use for the, for the, for the future here, which definitely takes a lot of the budget ask off of this piece. With that, staff are recommending passage of this and then we can get in the hiring process right away, so.
Great. Thank you. It's always quite a process to get the job descriptions and everything set up. So thank you very much for bringing this to us. Are there any comments from the council or questions? Councilmember Biskins?
So excited. I know Andrew's very excited too. This is long in coming and I'm very excited about this to have a consistent program, a person that's in charge. I just sent something in today to add to their to-do list when they get started. I just have a quick question. How soon will we be posting?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I'd let Community Development Director Mitch Fornay give a more detailed update. He's been collaborating with Human Resources.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I'll turn over the job or the job description to HR this week, so hopefully have it posted by the end of the week. And then approximately two to three, probably around three weeks to keep it open. And then we'll go through interviews and hopefully in about a month and a half, we'll, we'll have somebody in here.
Yay, very excited. Thank you very much for all your work in getting this done.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? I would just say that word of mouth is the best way to find out about positions, so anyone watching this, if you know anyone who's interested, please share this. I know it'll get posted on our city website, social media, LinkedIn, so please like and share so we get that message out and we get many people applying. We have some great qualified applicants to, to choose from, but thank you. All right, then we have a motion then to waive the reading. If there's no other comments.
Move to waive the reading of Resolution 2025-35, there being ample copies available to the public.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Spriggs and a second by Councilmember Danine to waive the reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. And next we have a motion to approve.
Move to approve Resolution 2025-35, a resolution authorizing an amendment to the fiscal year 2025 Planning and Inspections Fund Budget.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Spriggs and a second by Councilmember Danine to approve the resolution. Any discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you. Great work. Next in our meeting, we do not have bid considerations or new business, so that takes us to our City Council and Administrative Reports. And we will start with our report from City Councilmember James.
Okay, thank you. Can we pull up my report?
Yeah, sorry.
No problem. I'm ready. I'm ready. At the end of March, I was able to attend with the mayor and I don't know if anyone else will make it that night, the Community IFtar, supported by the Columbia Heights Police Foundation. Thank you so much for those officers and others who financed that and for the IFtar and all of our community members there to welcome us. It was a beautiful night. And then on the 27th, I was able to attend the Swearing In of Officer Jacoby. And we're just grateful for our police department continually recruiting and finding new officers and moving. And we're just grateful for our police department continually recruiting and finding new officers and moving forward. In April, the Economic Development Authority met and we had a good meeting on the 7th. We worked on some facade and fire suppression grants for our businesses. We are diligently working to bring money back to our business community so that we can support our business community and our business community can support our community. We had a work session that night as well. The Sustainability Commission met April 8th, and I'm the liaison to that, and we did our second session of our goal setting. And I'll tell you right now, the Sustainability Commission has some big goals. So thank you to our city planner, Andrew Boucher, and to all the staff that work with the Sustainability Commission. We're gonna continue to work on reaching those goals. And finally, on Saturday, Councilmember Spriggs and I attended a town hall put on by Senators Kanesh and Doran Clark and our Representatives Feist and Kegel, where they represented what they've been up to this year at the Minnesota State Legislature, answered residents' questions. And if you weren't able to make it, they do send weekly or bi-weekly reports to anyone who signs up on their websites, and you can also email them with any questions. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Biskins?
I attended the Minnesota City, well, I did it online, Minnesota Cities Climate Coalition. They talked about time-of-sale energy audits and Bloomington has badges for their residents in this type of program, which is kind of interesting, something for us to think about. Also, with other council members, attended the swearing-in for our new police officer, Jacoby, went and welcoming him to the community. I met with a resident up at Cordyac Park, Julian. We are going to be hopefully knocking on doors for folks up there to try to coax folks, more folks in adopting storm drains that feed into the lake at Cordyac Park to help clean it up a little bit more. Also attended the swearing-in for Captain, our new Captain Beth Pasal. And also attended online a senior consortium. It was really interesting to see what kind of services are provided for our seniors and they're starting a network apparently and work together on that, so. And that's it, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Councilmember Danine?
Thank you. I also attended the swearing-in ceremony for Officer Jacoby Dietrich at the police station. I attended a board gaming networking event at Fix Coffee at the end of last month. It was great to see a lot of people enjoying games and making new connections in our community. I attended the Local Progress Seminar on Approaches to Unsheltered Communities, where we discussed the needs of unhoused people as well as funding and zoning for houselessness programming. We also had a presentation about Dignity Village in Portland and how great, had great conversations on a myriad of ways that cities and counties can support unhoused individuals. I attended the City Planning Commission meeting where we welcomed three new commissioners to the dais and discussed the function of the commission and expectations of our city planning commissioners. I also attended the swearing-in ceremony for Columbia Heights Police Captain Beth Posel on the 4th, attended our EDA meeting and council work session on the 7th, and I stopped by the Buy Nothing event this weekend, which is really great to see all of our community members out there getting some stuff that they need and then also, you know, recycling things that you don't need anymore. That doesn't necessarily mean that no one can use them, and it's a great way to keep stuff out of landfills, to cut down on waste and also support people in our community, so that's it for me.
Great, thank you so much. And Councilmember Spriggs?
Yeah, just a couple of things, as other council members said. Also attended the EDA and Work Session. I also attended, as Councilmember James said, the Senate District Town Hall for Senate District 39, our district here. And it's great to hear from our representatives and state senator about just kind of the work going on at the Capitol and how that's relevant to us as a city and our county as well. And then last Thursday, I attended the Charter Commission as the liaison. They moved their meeting up just a week due to the holidays this week, so that was good to attend.
Thank you. It's been a busy few weeks. On March 25th, I met with faith leaders and the school district superintendent Stenvik and also Assistant Superintendent Bondo at First Lutheran Church to receive updates on the collaboration between faith communities and how they're serving families and students with the school district. On March 26th, I attended a Rotary Meeting, presenting was Braver Angels. Also, I met with the police chief at our regular bi-weekly meeting. The following day, March 27th, I participated in the Climate Coalition Virtual Meeting and saw Councilmember Biskins there and then attended the IFtar sponsored by the Columbia Heights Police Association. And that was such a fun night every year. It's just like more and more people are coming up and saying hi. And we actually had people come from Ham Lake to come down because they saw it was sponsored by the police. And people were coming up and asking me to take pictures of their families with the police officer. No one cared that I was the mayor. They wanted, they wanted pictures with the police officer, so that was a lot of fun to be there in community. Again, March 29th, I spoke at the Latino Lead Latina Activista Event that focused on empowering women in leadership. And on March 31st, attended the Local Progress Virtual Meeting with, with Councilmember Danine and was really just great to hear someone speaking about dignity housing and what they're doing in Portland, right, was it Portland? And different ways people are having services for when they aren't unhoused. On April 1st, I had a Leadership Summary Review Meeting here with our city manager and council member Biskins about our leadership training that we went through a few weeks ago. April 2nd, participated in a Rotary Meeting and also our Board Meeting, met with our police chief, city manager, and additionally met with our past Outstanding Citizens of the Year to select our next recipients. And then also was able to call our Business of the Year. So that will be announced shortly, but it's still a surprise, so I can't, I won't say anything yet. And then attended the Library Board Meeting. On April 3rd, I attended the Regional Council Mayor's Executive Planning Meeting and heard about our past meeting, which was with our police, and that was attended. I was not able to go to that meeting, but Councilmember James went in my place with our Captain Jackie Urbanak. Let's see, I also participated, also went to and participated in the swearing-in ceremony for Officer Jacoby Dietrich and then Captain Beth Pasal. On April 5th, I watched the movie Join or Die with the League of Women Voters. And this film discusses how joining a volunteer organization helps us become better community members and fosters a healthier democracy. I definitely recommend watching it if you haven't, it is on Netflix. And they suggest to watch it with friends, but it's a really great movie about getting involved. The main thing is that bowling teams have declined since the 50s, but that's indicative of people just getting involved. But as we heard earlier, volunteer life is very, very enriching and live and well in Columbia Heights. April 7th, I attended an EDA and City Work Session with the rest of our council. April 8th, participated in the Sister Cities Meeting, where we're discussing a Polish picnic that might be collaborated with the city. At April 9th, attended another Rotary Meeting and Art to Change the World Board Meeting. And April 10th, I judged the art contest at North Park Elementary School. April 11th, I spoke with high school students at North Hennepin Technical College about pursuing a future in elected office. And then finally, April 12th, helped organize the Buy Nothing Group Event at First Lutheran Church. And that is open to the public, those are usually done fall, winter, and spring. And every time it happens, more people come and everyone is just giving generously of kind of their abundance. And it's just really a great event. So the next time there's a Buy Nothing Group Event, definitely suggest people stop by. Everything is free. And that is my full report. I added dates because at our EDA and Work Session, we actually had a community member who was there. He heard us all as a council talking about what we'd be doing this upcoming month. And he said, "I can't believe how busy you all are and how much you're a part of the community doing things." And I thought, "I'm just gonna name all the dates of the things that I did to kind of show how, how involved we all are and just demonstrating our care for our community." Councilmember James?
Thank you. I, you definitely are involved and busy, very much so. I was just gonna mention, I realize our next meeting won't be until after the street cleanup, so I wanted to invite anyone, I forgot to say this in my report, but on April 26th, there is an opportunity to clean up Central Avenue in Columbia Heights, and we need all the help we can get. We're gonna meet at the library at 9:00 a.m. if you are interested in coming. We would love to have you come out and bring some friends. Alternatively, if you can't do that, you can adopt any of the parks in Columbia Heights or just do an unscheduled pickup, that is allowed. And then there's gonna be, I think, a community shredding event that same day that maybe the city manager will share. But it's April 26th at 9:00 a.m. at the library. Thank you.
And usually there's like free treats, right?
Yes, we're gonna have Heights Bakery Donuts.
Yes, double reasons to come out. Yes, oh, Councilmember Spriggs?
Councilmember James, if you have little children, is there an alternative?
Yes, thank you so much. We do parks for the kids, and so usually the week of, I drive around and see which parks need it the most.
Great question, yes. So if you show up and you're older, an adult, and feel safe on the streets, you'll be assigned a couple blocks to help clean up as a group. And then families with young children will get assigned a park. And yeah, and then they pick up the trash, we try to gather it. And every year, we pick up, I don't even know, 30, 40 bags of trash along Central Avenue. All right, thank you, everyone, and now we'll hear a report from our city manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, a few routine updates and then some responses to questions that were raised at the last community forum. So paper shredding, to kick it off, is in fact April 26th. It's a free paper shredding event that will be at the Columbia Heights Recycling Center on Saturday, the 26th, from 10:00 to noon. Along with that, the city's encouraging attendees to bring recyclable materials to the center while you're there. Today, the city was contacted by the WCCO news team. They did a special on the city's fire hydrant flushing program that's taking place right now. That should air later this week. Arbor Day Tree Sale is underway and winding down. There's just a few trees remain, at last count, I think six. If you have interest in that, please visit the city's website. You can just search Arbor Day Tree Sale in the search function. So at the last community forum, there were some questions that were raised regarding a few things. The first was the city's water meter replacement program and how the meters are being recycled. I have some detailed information from the city's Public Works Director. So what happens with the old meters, HydroCorp, the city's contractor that is doing the swaps, brings the meters and the radios back to Public Works. And as Public Works staff have time, they do dismantle those, separating the brass from the radio. The brass is then picked up for recycling. That revenue does go into the city's water fund. The radios do have both plastic and metal inside them, and they are separated as well. And we pay for that effort due to those metals that are in the radios. So the city doesn't dismantle the radios, a separate company is doing that on behalf of the city. Depending on commodity pricing, the city then receives about $5.50 to $6.25 per meter. It costs about $2 to $2.50 to recycle the radios. And the net is $3 to $4 per meter that goes back into the city's water meter fund. There were some questions around the material composition of the meters, and staff did reach out to Census, who is providing the new meters on a fact sheet specifically related to microplastics. We haven't received that. Of note, the Public Works Director added that the current meters that are being removed did have plastic in them, a plastic screen and a plastic piston that water flowed through as part of the mechanical measurement apparatus. That design, in his estimation, is improved with the new meters as far as how water interacts with plastic. There aren't mechanical plastic moving parts, rather. It's measured electromagnetically through a composite polymer flow tube, so a plastic tube, but magnets measuring the flow rate rather than the plastic parts moving in the way that they used to. That's all the information we can provide on plastics right now. There are, were also questions from the same individual about contract obligations with waste management. So they're specifically, the individual raised the question about liquidated damages. So what did the city get back for the poor performance of waste management during the time where we were having all the issues in the pandemic and switching to a different contractor? He mentioned that he didn't see a credit on his bill and would like to know what happened to that money and what has happened in general. So from the city's Finance Director, I received the following response. There were two remedies to address these breaches of contract by waste management. The amounts that the city paid for alternate hauling and disposal were taken on a dollar-for-dollar basis and reduced the amount that the city paid to waste management under that contract. There's not a credit under that remedy to the customer, because it was just like-for-like exchange. To the extent that a pickup was missed by the hauler for an entire service cycle that's weekly for most customers, and to the extent that the city was aware of that or that it was reported by the customer calling or other means, the city did credit individual customers' bills for those missed pickups and then short-paid that corresponding amount to waste management. So neither of those remedies compensated the city or customers for all problems. We're, you know, we're aware of that and all of the contract breaches by waste management, we would note that they were significant and didn't require additional time and expense of litigation, so.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate you being able to provide a report from past questions at our community forum. Thank you for doing that.
And I would add, the questions raised about Gould Parking, I missed an opportunity. I just want to manage expectations for study, you know, that term was being thrown around. The city's not gonna commission a third-party study to analyze, you know, what has happened in those three months. What I'd like to propose is just a compilation of reporting from the various departments that have interacted with residents or business community or that have taken action. And then we can look at that data and make a determination on how the council would like to move forward. But there, there's not going to be an independent third-party study, just a report back, thank you.
I believe that will suffice. Yeah, just we haven't had that opportunity yet to hear those reports and have it compiled together. So that will be good, I think, for the council. Yes. All right, well, thank you for the, your report and letting us know about the paper shredding event. Any questions or any other comments from the council? All right, then, hearing is none, then could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Biskins and a second by Councilmember Spriggs to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night.